This February 13th Board of Selectmen meeting is an open meeting of the Town of Auburn. Board of Selectmen is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For the public to join the meeting remotely or by telephone, dial 1-408-650-3123, access code 235235861, or the public can join by a computer at https://global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. All supporting materials have been provided to the members of this body and are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. All board members are present, so we can stand for the Fledge of Allegiance.
Fledge of Allegiance to flag States of America in two republics which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
No public comments, Sarah.
Okay, we have no public comments, so we're going to move on to the public hearings and presentations. She just needs me to read this.
Yes, it would read here.
So we have a fire response recognition from Mrs. Stone. I'm going to read the email she sent. She says, "It's taken me almost three weeks to write this. I wanted to be able to express my eternal gratitude to the Auburn Fire Department and EMS for their incredible and valiant care of me and my husband, Mark C. Stone. I cannot express how blessed we are here in Auburn to have these amazingly trained, kind, compassionate people to serve us. These men and women are the best of the best, especially to me and my family. On January 9th, they were called to my house to help my husband, who was very sick with a blood infection and a fever of 103, not COVID. They quickly cared for him and took him to the hospital. On January 15th, he was released from the hospital. After a mere 10 minutes from his release, he suffered a full cardiac arrest in the car with me on Route 290. It was dark and cold, and I was alone in the car. I thought of stopping to do CPR, but I knew I'd waste precious time in trying to do this on my own. It was about a half a mile from the Auburn Mall exit, so I hit the gas and begged him not to die. I knew my only hope was to get to the Auburn Fire Department for help. Let's just say I got there in about a minute. I jumped from my car at the fire station and went screaming inside for help. Within seconds, these fantastic men and women came flying out the door to help. They immediately started CPR on Mark. I was a hysterical mess. In an instant, Mark was on a gurney with them, continuing CPR all the way into the bay. They knew I was having a nervous breakdown, so a couple of them surrounded me and guided me into the office to take care of me and reassured me. They were doing all they could possibly do to save him. They explained everything in detail to me about what they were doing to save Mark's life. They got me some tissues and a cup of water, simple things that meant so much to me at the moment: a hug and a promise to get me to the hospital so I didn't have to drive again. They knew I wouldn't be able to after what I had witnessed. I asked several of them for their names, but of course, I could not remember them all. I am so sorry I didn't retain those names better. My mind was definitely not there. They moved my car and said they would take care of it and not to worry. One young fireman named Nick, I remembered his name. He is the one who drove me to the hospital to be with Mark, just in case. They knew I needed to be there. Nick explained everything that was being done to save my husband of almost 40 years. Then he offered to pray with me. It was very comforting to me. He kept me calm and spoke with a kind voice and a warm heart. As we pulled up to the hospital, he offered a chance to pray again. We did. Once I entered the hospital, everything was a blur. Nick simply held my hand and just spoke to me, offering support, which I will always appreciate more than words can say. The wonderful Auburn team, who worked so very hard on Mark, came out to join Nick and I in the waiting room. Hugs and more explanations about what they had done on the way was comforting to my frazzled brain. The doctor came out and told me all they had done, but Mark was on life support and not doing well. The doctor asked me if they could shut off the Lucas machine and ventilator to see if Mark had any spontaneous rhythms or breath. I told them I wanted to be there when they did. Every single one of the Auburn team came in with me. Nick and a young firewoman held me up when I got to the door and saw Mark. It certainly took a few seconds to compose myself. They hung on tight. Then they guided me to a chair so I could hold Mark's hand to be close to him. They all stood next to me as everything was shut off. Maybe a couple of beats of his heart, but then it flatlined and Mark was gone. Every single member of the Auburn team came and gave me hugs and offered their sincere condolences. They had tried so hard to save Mark, but I truly believe he died in the car with me that night. So from the bottom of my heart and my family's heart, I wanted to say thank you to the entire Auburn Fire Department and EMS, who were there with me and took such good care of Mark and I during the worst moments of our lives. Thank you just isn't enough for the dignity and care you showed us that night. Auburn is a very lucky town to have such incredible people who take care of us. This isn't just a job, it's a calling. God bless you all and keep you safe."
Madam Chair, if I may, there was quite a touching story, and my sympathy goes out to Mrs. Stone. But what a compliment to the Auburn Fire Department and the heroic efforts they tried to take to save her husband. My appreciation as a result of that story goes out to each and every member who tried to assist Mrs. Stone. And I think more stories need to be told about what happens on a day-to-day basis here within our Public Safety Department. So I'm glad the story was read, because I think it really complements what you have done and what you continue to do to make it a successful department. So, thank you, Chief.
So I don't see that we have any communications. We do have a request for a name change. Do we need to open? Oh, I would need a motion to...
I'll make a motion that we approve the change in owner name and address to Lundgren Equity Partners LLC, trustee CEO Glickman-Cavaggio and Jacobson Management, 1 Burkeontale Street, Suite 510, Western Massachusetts. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That vote went through. So we have a request to change the name of the owner and address, information on the flameable storage permit for 201 Washington Street.
Chair, I'll make a motion that we make a change to the name at that address to Deb Jr., with Deb Jr., Neta LLC, care of Harlemore Corporation, 795 Plymouth Street, Holbrook, Massachusetts. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And Chair is yes. Next, we have, we need a vote to open the warrant for the May 2nd, 2023 Annual Town Meeting. And the Chair is yes. We have a vote to close the annual town meeting. So...
I would make a motion that we vote to close the annual town meeting warrant on Monday, March 6, 2023, at close of business.
All those in favor? Sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the Chair is a yes. We do have a gift acceptance from Deanna and John White for $300 to the Auburn Fire and Rescue.
Motion to accept with gratitude and that a letter be prepared for the Chair's signature. Second.
All those in favor? The Chair is a yes as well. And I think now we're up to Town Manager items.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have both Chiefs here to describe to you in a little more detail about a request being made through Opera Funds. This request is for a public safety fiber network upgrade that would create an additional ring to our existing ring for our primary and backup radios and repeaters. So with that, I will turn it over to Chief Coleman and Chief Lemon to get into some of the specifics about the request before you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for having us tonight. So as I had outlined briefly in my email last Friday, this is a request that has sort of been looming out there for a little bit. And what we are looking to do is to create what we're calling the Public Safety Fiber Network that will support the public safety communications for the town. Without boring you with too much of the technical detail, the way that our radio systems operate now is on copper telephone lines, and it's been that way for 50-plus years operating. So the advantage of moving from the copper telephone lines to the fiber is right now, all of the communication through the telephone line, it's directional in one way. So if a tree comes down and takes down wires in the telephone line, it has the potential, and has happened, where radio communications would get knocked out at a certain site, because again, it's the one-directional telephone line. By putting in a fiber network, this will create a loop, and then the way fiber operates is that loop is to travel two-directional. So even in the event that something were to happen in a particular site, we would be able to redirect communication, so the possibility of losing that link and that loop reduces significantly. I will just tell you that Mike Marino, the town's IT Director, is on tonight, so if there are any technical questions that we can't answer, I would ask Mr. Marino to step in as he is the fiber expert in town, and he manages all of the town's fiber infrastructure as it sits. So sort of the long-term plan right now, and Mr. Marino can certainly talk to this much better than I can, but right now, the town has fiber, but our fiber is not a loop. Our fiber deadends in certain areas, and it is the town's hope that down the road, and there is a grant that we're eyeballing for some of the kind of non-emergency side of the fiber. There is a grant that Mike is eyeballing that's going to close some of those loops. But Mike's hope is that he wants to get public safety off of the town's loop completely, so public safety has their own loop. It could still use the town's as a backup for redundancy, but in order to kind of, as I understand it, to make more strands available within the fiber, they want to just get public safety on their own loop. So we've solicited quotes. The quote for the fiber installation is roughly around $410,000, $411,000, somewhere around there. And then the remaining 75 and some change is for microwave, because even with the fiber, when you think about it from a topography standpoint, there are still some low areas in town where you kind of have to, you know, picture like a microwave dish where you have to shoot a signal down into a particular low spot. The fiber just gets the connection, it doesn't actually assist with how the transmissions are coming out of like hills and valleys. So the total project for the fiber network, again, is the $500,000 that we are requesting. So if there's any questions, either myself or Chief Lemon can hopefully answer. If not, Mike Marino is here.
Do we have any questions?
Well, this will get you 100% coverage.
So yes, as far as the public safety link, this will complete the loop. This will allow us to have fiber at all of our existing radio sites, which we do not have now. There is fiber at some of them, but not all. So this will create that redundant loop, and it will bring fiber to all of our existing locations and put in the microwave. So this project, as far as the, because it's sort of a two-part question, but the short answer is yes. This will get us fiber to 100% of our existing radio sites and the microwave. There are still what we call voting sites, which basically, you know, when you key the microphone, in a split second, it says, well, which receiver is picking this up better? There are still some voter sites that the Police Department and the Fire Department are working on through our capital improvement budget to still enhance this, but from a network standpoint, this will complete the public safety fiber network. There will be, at some point, the Town Manager and Mike Marino will be coming before the Board, asking you to support a grant, I believe it's through the MMA. I believe it's an MMA grant to close the existing town side, and I believe the quote on that, that Mike received, was somewhere around $125,000. So there is still some fiber that the town needs to do in order to close some, but there is a different funding plan for that. So Mike Marino did reach out to the company. One of the questions that was asked today was the timeline in the event that this project is approved. Mike Marino reached out to the company today. The company that we solicited is on the state bid list, and they are the company that has run and worked on all of the town's existing fiber. They are booking about 22 weeks out, so roughly five months, and then from the time they, I'm sorry, five months to receive all of the material. And then once they receive all the material and start work, they expect it to be completed in about 30 days. So we'd be looking at about a six-month completion time if this was approved tonight. And this is, you know, why this is sort of, this ask is important is that both the police and fire are in the throes of communication upgrades sort of separate from the fiber. So the fact that this additional fiber can be run sort of simultaneously at the same time that we're doing base radio upgrades and voter upgrades and all of those things, it'll kind of actually be able to tie both of these projects together somewhat seamlessly.
Does this alleviate maintenance on other systems or phone lines?
Yeah, so those phone lines will go away. And again, that's another advantage, because right now on the copper lines, you know, we're paying a monthly bill for phone lines. So once we become 100% reliant on fiber, all of those copper phone lines will go away. There's obviously the upfront cost of the fiber, but then there's no monthly expenses like we pay now for all of the phone lines that we occupy for our radio system. We occupy a tremendous amount of phone lines just to operate radios, so all of those will go away. It's a quick comment without being dramatic about this. These are the, communications is what keeps the police chief and the fire chief and the deputy chiefs up at night when we have high winds, storms. It's important to have redundancies so people can communicate. This will move us to where we need to be to provide the best public safety communications between police, fire, and EMS throughout the community. So this is, it's a good thing that we're moving. And the town has already expended money with the existing fiber that runs throughout the town at the various sites to make sure that this plan will work. So this isn't a pipe dream that we're hoping it's going to work. We've already spent the money to test it with the engineers to come out and say, not only did it work, but, you've got to remember, I'm not a radio guy, but not only did it work, but it exceeded their expectations with how well it's expected to work with the bandwidth that the fiber will be able to transmit. Yeah, that's a good point. It's the, I was trying to, while you were talking, I was trying to think of the word, proof of concept. So the proof of concept plan has already, we've already expended the money for the engineers to do the proof of concept, and that came back, and this plan is the plan. So what we're looking to build out is what the engineers designed within the proof of concept plan.
And this is based off what you had mentioned? There's no intention, I'm kind of reading it, to go out to bid? You just plan to use the one that the quote came from?
Yeah, I mean, one of the advantages of state bid is that all of these companies are already vetted, and you're getting the best possible price, because they're already pre-negotiated reduced prices with municipalities. So in my experience, you know, I'm not saying this is 100%, but in my experience, every time that we've gone out to bid on a particular project, the rates are usually not as competitive as to what you're doing off of the state bid list. You know, I mean, in my mind, it just makes sense to go with a company that's already built out all of the fiber infrastructure within the community. They know the system. So that, to me, makes sense. There's a lot of extra time and money that goes into writing a bid, going out to bid, you know, reviewing bids. That's why the state bid list exists. You know, it's already negotiated prices at reduced rates. So, you know, typically, we try to do as much as we can off state bid list, because there's a cost savings just right out of the gate doing a state bid project, because it's been vetted by multiple committees at the state level in order to kind of sharpen the pencil to get those reduced prices. Even with, you know, things like, not just to kind of stray for a second, but comp buys is a, you know, we're encouraged and pushed to do most of the buying that we do, from paper to pens to whatever it is, because you can't go out and buy paper for what you're buying it through comp buys at a already reduced negotiated price. So that's the advantage of a lot of those bidding systems.
I forget which governor came up with it. It might have been Governor Romney who came up with the concept of the bid list for this very purpose, to get money from where it is to where it needs to go in the shortest amount of time. So I know that it's been a godsend for the time that it's been in place, because it doesn't circumvent 30B, but it actually works off of the balance of what 30B is. It's keeping the good people in and hopefully weeding out as much as possible the bad people. So I think it's been a successful program.
The people that sit on state bid list, they work hard to get there, because they're not there because they're not reputable companies. Like, they have to jump through a lot of hoops in order to maintain their status on a state bid list.
I know that we had this slated under the Blaker Street, and that, when I looked back at my own history of it, it's been almost four years since we even started discussing that process and trying to find money for what was identified as a problem then. So it's definitely not a need that hasn't been identified, and there hasn't been an attempt to locate non-tax revenues to do it. But as we know, these projects don't necessarily follow the course that we would like them to, or in the time that we would like them to. So I'm in support of doing this, because again, I do think it's, just looking at the Instagram pages, how many cars that have been flipped over in the last couple of weeks, you know? Obviously, that's not comforting, to see that many situations in relatively dry conditions where people are flipping their cars and causing no end of headaches for the people in town, as well as the people trying to remediate the issue.
I just have one question. Is this in addition to a possible communications tower?
So, no. The word "tower" has been thrown out. I think it was, I guess, you know, mischaracterized. I think when we talk about communications, like "tower" is typically the first thing. So there is no need for a communications tower. So what we're looking to do is run the fiber on the poles to the existing radio sites that are already existing. The only time that we would be talking about constructing a new tower is if the Public Safety Building is passed, but that would be part of the cost of the Public Safety Building. So there is no tower. It's the fiber network to connect to the existing radio sites we have.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Does anybody else have any questions? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we vote to authorize $500,000 in Opera Funds for the fiber optic program as described.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the Chair is a yes.
Thank you very much for your support. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
All right, it looks like we don't have any proclamations or, oh wait, oh, sorry, we're still on UED. The request.
Madam Chair, the next item, this matter came before the Board at your last meeting. We are seeking, if anyone on the Board is interested, to have a representative as a Board member as part of the working group for a project that's being done under CMR PC to update our housing production plan. I don't know if anyone has given that any consideration, but if, and I had a discussion with Adam, if there isn't a Board member interested, then we would seek to maybe get a member from the Planning Board to serve on that committee. So certainly, I would leave that up to you. But I know the Planning Board is meeting tomorrow, and it'd be nice to get a decision from the Board tonight, so we can pursue getting a Planning Board member if there's no interest on any one of you serving on that committee.
I certainly have an interest, but I also feel that the Planning Board deals with this in as closer to the work than any of us, and I know there are other former Planning Board members much more current than I. So I'm interested, but I would rather see a Planning Board member, just because they're closer to the work and they would do, I know, a phenomenal job.
So it sounds like maybe we should go to the Planning Board and see if...
So, given the feedback I'm getting, I will have a discussion with Adam and see if he can try to recruit someone from the Planning Board to serve on that committee.
Would you like a vote from us at requesting?
It would be nice to get a vote from the Board asking to refer this to the Planning Board and ask if there would be a member interested in serving.
I mean, if nothing beats that motion that we refer to that, I'm just going to say what the comment I discussed said. All second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair is yes.
Item C, the Terms of Development Agreement. I can tell you that we had a meeting scheduled last week with Mr. Venakasa relative to the Perry Street project. Unfortunately, there was a sickness that prevented one of us from attending. I'm going to keep that individual nameless right now. So we do have a meeting scheduled this Wednesday, so we're going to resume discussions at that point in time. So hopefully, we can bring something in at the next meeting. The Budget Schedule Update, I just wanted to let the Board know that, and it ties into the warrant request. This budget season has been a difficult one, primarily because we have a new administration, and the state numbers are not due out until March 1st. Typically, under normal circumstances, the governor's numbers are released at the end of January. So this puts us back about eight weeks from where we normally are. As a result of that, 20% of our revenue source comes from the state, and I don't know what that number is. Now, I know they were officially released on March 1st. I'm hoping to get early indication as to what that may be, hopefully a week before. Keeping that in mind, I would like to get a budget to the Finance Committee or to the Board at your February 27th meeting, if possible, that would allow me to then bring it into the Finance Committee on March 1st. As a result of this delay, I've had discussions with the Chairman of the Finance Committee to see if there would be a willingness to have a long meeting on a Saturday, so we could kind of catch up on the three weeks that we missed. And there is interest in doing that. So with that being said, although it's coming in late, I think we have an opportunity to catch up by having that one meeting on a Saturday. And quite honestly, this may set a trend for the future as well, if we can do it a Saturday and then minimize the amount of Wednesdays they meet after that initial meeting, I think would be beneficial for all. I talked to the Department Heads, there's a willingness on their part to participate on a Saturday, so I think we can make it work. But I just wanted to bring you up to date as to when you can expect to see some numbers, and we're going to try to get something to you for the 27th. If not, we may have to have a special meeting the first week in March.
The numbers on the 27th wouldn't be accurate, or you're thinking they'll release them early enough that they will be?
When I attended the annual MMA conference when the governor spoke, she said the official release is on March 1st, but they're going to make every effort to get the information to trickle down before the official release. So I'm hoping maybe a week before, we may receive some information that will give us some guidance in at least establishing an amount for the state that will lead to our recommendations, so. Moving on, Opera Premium Pay Report. So since your last meeting, provided a memo to you with the expectation that we would process the payroll this week after the regular payroll. process the payroll this week after the regular payroll, we try to generate, generate a special payroll this Thursday to be keyed in with a release of a check next week. That's our intent. And the premise of that, that payment is outlined in the letter. So I just want to highlight a few things within the letter. Let me just, my... So as we indicated, we went with option C, which seems to be the cleanest method of distribution. In under C, with an emphasis on frontline employees, which are primarily made of public safety departments, it'd be a distribution of $3,000 for each frontline employee. And those are the individuals who assume the highest risk on a day-to-day basis as a result of their interaction with the public. Additionally, the board supported an additional $1,500 payment for fire, rescue department, paramedics, and EMTs on the ambulance. So that's built into the equation. Also, inspectors who responded to calls during the pandemic would receive, which include public health, building inspectors, animal control, they would receive a $1,000 payment. All other town employees would receive 500, and there's a bonus for employees who worked onsite for vaccination clinics would receive $25 for each, each clinic that they participated in. Given that, the following has been calculated, and we said we were going to come back with a number, and please, I want to emphasize that this may change by like $50 to $100. We're still trying to identify a couple of people who, the discrepancy on whether they work the clinic or not, but we'll have that ironed out this week. Police and fire rescue frontline offices, the total is $213,390. The total for ambulance, paramedic, and EMTs, $37,500. Those inspectors, including animal control, health, and building, $6,200. Employees, all other employees in the outside categories would be getting $32,305.95, because that includes some individuals who are prorated. And employees who work the vaccination clinics at 4,100, for a total amount of $293,495.95. Now, that may go up by 150 or 100, certainly well under the 300 that was authorized, and I just wanted to provide this update to you, knowing that this was going to be processed this week with a payment date of next week. Any questions relative to the amount, the report, the process?
I did want to go back to the terms of development agreement if we could, Madam Chair. It's a quick one.
Okay, go ahead.
So I had met with the town manager just before this, and I noticed, having gone over the previous LIP agreement that we had, the board at that time, and decided to put, dedicate money to a specific program in town, which is for concerts at Pappas Park. And I was just going to hope to ask the board members to keep the sum of money, but to just, to a town program. You know, the senior center and, and obviously, the library have a lot of programs. They do very well with grants, but it would be nice to be able to, as they need monies, to be able to say, okay, the LIP, we've got X number of dollars, we can do this or we can't do this. Obviously, police and fire also do a variety of programs, and schools obviously do programs as well. So I just was going to ask if we could make that slight change from a specified thing to this is how much it is, but it's for programs, town-wide programs, however it gets massaged.
That's so I'm clear. We, I think there's an amount in the current LIP agreement with Eastland Partners that does set aside money for community events. That discussion is also taking place with a potential LIP agreement with the Perry Place project. Are you suggesting that we be more broad about the community aspect in the Perry Place to be used for community events, not specific to, but may include, but not specific?
Because we do get a lot of donations. We've all been seen them from the business community, and I just, they do a lot of good work at the senior center and at, singling them out for no specific reason, but I just know that they do well with grants, as most of the departments do, but there are some programs that I know that they would like to do that perhaps this would help them be able to do it, and grant funds don't necessarily extend as far as we would like it to. So I don't want to change the dollar amount, just make it more general, if people are willing.
I mean, I would be happy to convey that at next meeting on Wednesday, but it would help me out if the board took a position in the vote to, so I could carry that in.
We'd like to make that motion, that we create that space and make it more of a community fund for various department programs townwide versus a specific something for the current LIP agreement that we're under.
So I'm not exactly sure how everything got negotiated or where it's hand in it, but I know there was talks, talk about funding certain things, so just want to make sure that we're not pulling money that's not intended for that, but still cover that. So I don't know if there's, was specific for community events or engagement.
My understanding was there was a dollar amount, whatever that dollar amount was. So I'm not looking to say, take it from anything else, just whatever would be in that pool of money.
Actually, I'm, I'm reading the, the item under the agreement now, and I think, I don't think we would have to further negotiate this because it says contribute $20,000 per year for the first five years after full occupancy of the project to be used for community events. So it's not specific to, so if you're happy with that, then...
I'm happy with that.
I'm sorry.
What do we consider full occupancy, 100% occupancy for X number of time? Like, that's, I just want to make sure that's defined. I don't, sometimes...
It wouldn't be, well, certainly, you may have a unit that's unoccupied for a period of time. I think once they get an, an occupancy permit...
Okay, that's, I just want to make sure that... That's the definition. I am going forward.
Definitely think we need to discuss how these things are triggered because, again, we're almost four years into Eastland Partners, and I, I really do think that there needs to be some sort of upfront payment for these things so that we can, and also language in there that is going to tie them to some sort of specific timeline. Because, again, Blaker Street, I mean, I love dirt, just like anybody else, but at some point, you gotta, you gotta do something.
They're proposing to build multiple buildings. I'm assuming that they'll be filing for permits for each separate building, is it occupancy on the entire project or on each building?
As it relates to which one, because there's a trigger on Eastland.
On, on the one we're negotiating. I just, so I, I don't want to go backwards, but obviously, we've learned some lessons, and I just want to make sure, like, I, I don't even know how many buildings are proposed right now, but let's say there's four buildings and they build three of them and decide not to do the fourth. Does that mean that they don't have to proceed with the agreement?
Well, I think the occupancy isn't defined, but we can have that discussion. We'll follow up with that on Wednesday, because I don't quite understand how it's going to be phased at this point in terms of the occupancy. So I'm sure it's as the project is proposed and developed, I would say in its entirety, but we, I, I could follow up on that with, with Mr. Venakasa.
Also, if there's probably bonding or if there's any bonding tied to, maybe that's because I'm not trying to negotiate or renegotiate that, but I just want to make sure that anything that is negotiated properly, covered, or bonded, not that gets through, so my understanding of the process, which is a very complicated question, just want to make sure that that is something to discuss, but anything that's negotiated and is bonded in there.
Typically, the town will hold a surety bond or some type of bond for a period of time until all the conditions are met. So I think that's pretty common, pretty standard.
Yeah, I, again, about in the negotiations, and again, I think it's weird that we're negotiating this before we close through, and we don't even get to know the plan in the first place. But as I'm going through it, I'm thinking of more of those things. I'm trying to be there on the input, as we have opportunities.
Is that, Madam Chair, the senior center?
I think you're the last one, is the senior center flooding update.
Okay. So I wanted to update the board on the status of the senior center. I think I reached out and let the board know that we had a flooding incident that occurred on February 4th, the 3rd and the 4th. It was last Saturday night, the 4th, I got a call from the fire chief saying that his men and women of the department were responding to a call up on Goddard Drive because water was coming out of the building. I went to the scene shortly after I received the call, and they were squeeging out water out of the building. About two inches of water in the entire building, more in the kitchen, maybe three inches in the kitchen. And they did a fantastic job. They had the building cleaned out. The water had been running for a period of time. A neighbor called, they saw water coming out of the building, is how you understand it, Steve? Who made the call to, to dispatch. I don't know when the pipe burst, but it, a lot of water fell from the ceiling of the kitchen where the pipe broke in the senior center. Puro Clean was called, they came in, they were on site that evening. They started the remediation work, which took about three to five days, which required some testing of material to find out the moisture content within the building. I had just learned, and during that period of time, we set up shop, and I want to thank Reverend Knight for allowing us to use Packer Chalk Church Kitchen Area to prepare meals and to send them out to our, our senior population. So thanks to him for that. But just learned the other day, and maybe yesterday, that the floors have to be replaced, the tile floors, the rugs have to be replaced, some of the sheet rock has to be removed and replaced, and the kitchen area needs a major overhaul. Cabinets need to come down. We don't know the status of the appliances. We have someone looking at that. But it caused a lot of damage, and it is estimated that the senior center is going to be closed for three to four months. When I first learned that, we had discussions with Reverend Knight. I asked the insurance company if they would provide, through the claim, an allowance for the rental of a facility to relocate activities at the senior center for that period of time. They said it does qualify, so we're now looking at options on where to relocate our support services for our, our seniors on a daily basis, which includes activities as well as feeding our, our senior population. We continue to work closely with the insurance company, with Puro Clean, to, to remediate and to rehab the senior center, but it's going to be, it was a lot longer process than I anticipated initially. So I wanted to let you know, in case you get calls, we have notified our seniors through our, our reporting system at the, at the senior center. We'll post something online on our website, but unfortunately, we probably won't be able to reopen until spring.
Whether a new location is found, still being signed to go up on, if it's in building or if it's in town, it's a different case.
Yes.
Probably because I know how COVID affected them, which thankfully, we're not dealing with that at this particular moment, so thank you for doing that.
It's amazing to, to see how much, in terms of activities, have been resumed since COVID. Back to a, a, a strength that we saw pre-COVID, if not more. So I, I think seniors are itching to get out and to socialize and to, and to take advantage of those activities, and certainly, we don't want that to be interrupted. So we'll, we'll figure it out, and we'll let you know when that's going to take place.
All right, I see we have no table items, no select board items. Our packets included the January 9th minutes. I, are there any edits? All right, I assume they're read and accepted, so we just need a motion to adjourn.
One more.
Absolutely.
So in August, I made an announcement that I was not going to seek office in the upcoming May election, and I am very grateful to the many people who reached out to me and asked me to reconsider. I am pleased to announce that I will seek a one-year seat on the board, and obviously, it's up to the voters, but I'm hoping to be successful in getting to continue to work with the board and the various town departments to continue a successful run. And with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn, Madam Chair.
All in favor? And the chair is yes.